The Budget Board together, we do have a quorum, we have nine members present. And if I could just make one little side note, I had a call this week, and I know it's a constant that we got, from a woman who very much enjoys watching the meetings. However, she would love to be able to hear them. So if we could all please speak into the microphone for Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you Barbara.
Good point, alright.
Laurie?
So, good evening everyone. We have some capital budgets up for you tonight for consideration. But first, Tracy Aroque was at some training out of state last week, so we didn't go over her town clerk budget. Her town clerk budget is part of the administrative budget, and you can find it on pages 75, 81, and 82. Everybody has their pink sheet, pink for capital. So we are going to turn on the projector, so you might want to step to the side, so you don't get blasted by light. So, Michael, you're on.
I think we're going to send it right back their way.
So Tracy, you're up.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for being so accommodating and allowing me to do my operating budget tonight instead of last week. I appreciate your flexibility. And in the interest of time, I've integrated my operating budget and my CIP together, so I can just do one presentation. So let's jump in. I'm excited to share with you the accomplishments of 2018 and the goals of 2019 for the town clerk's office. Of all the tasks and responsibilities that the town clerk's office has, I think one of the most important and often overlooked is being a conduit from the people who are trying to contact the town to the town itself. I can think of it as a large funnel, and we're the big end, because the town clerk's office phone number is on everything, so everyone calls us regardless of what the question is. So it's our job to funnel these questions and concerns to the proper department or staff member. So that's a big part of what we do on a day-to-day So as you can see, we were very busy in 2018 with various licenses and permits, and a lot of people ask, why do we have to issue so many permits? Well, some of them are mandated by the state and some are due to local ordinances. The state requirements would be the liquor licenses, the shellfish licenses, and then town ordinances cover the special amusement, the trolley permits, horse-drawn carriages, special amusements, I think I already said, the vitueller's license. And in addition to that, we also process thousands of Dock Square parking tickets, as well as hundreds of Goose Rock Beach parking stickers. And in this budget, we have suggested some price increases for some of the licenses. We haven't increased our prices in over 10 years, so I did a survey of local towns around us, and we were very much lower than everybody else. So for the liquor and special amusement and vitueller's, we have suggested an increase this year. And in addition to over 7,000 tax and sewer payments, we also registered thousands of cars, and we did hundreds of boats, snowmobiles, and 40 ATVs. And you might wonder why we do boats, snowmobiles, and ATVs. We are an agent for Inland Fisheries, which is a state agency, and we only get a dollar agent fee per transaction, but it's more of a convenience for our residents, so that they don't have to go out of town to other towns or the state to get their permits, their fishing licenses, things like that. So it's more just a convenience that we offer to them, but it does take up a lot of time. We issued 80 marriage licenses last year, and each marriage license takes about an hour from start to finish, from the time that we get the paperwork to the time the license is issued. And Audrey in my office is the one that handles almost all of them, unless she's on vacation. I do it for her. So that's 80 hours last year, just in marriage licenses for her time. So it takes quite a bit of time, but she does enjoy it. She loves talking to the couples, and it's a good customer service thing that we offer. And last year, we issued 867 dog licenses. And in order to spice up dog licenses, we also did a photo contest again this year, and had people submit photos in four different categories. And this was actually a winner from last year, but I love this picture so much that I had to use it. His name is Gus Midgley, and he won the best dressed in 2017. And we have all the photos from both contests up on the wall in the clerk's office, if anyone wants to come by and see them. And we do get asked a lot, why do I have to register my dog? Cats don't have to be registered, it's not fair. It's a state law, is the bottom line. But there's more to it than that. Each dog who's licensed gets a tag with a specific number attached to it. So if that dog is lost, we can type in that number in the computer. We know who belongs to the dog, so we can get the dog back. And if it's not licensed or doesn't have the tag, it gets taken to AWS. So I think the $6 annual fee is worth not having your beloved pet go to the animal shelter for the day. Yes?
It also ensures that the dogs are inoculated.
Yes, that is the point of the state law, is to make sure that dogs have their rabies certificates and their rabies vaccines. And vital records is one of the most important responsibilities of a town clerk. The town's history is recorded in these books, and it protects the information for generations to come. We get lots of genealogy research questions and things like that. And because of the importance of these records, I have asked for $5,000 in the capital budget again this year for records preservation. You've been very generous for as long as I can, as long as I've been here, and even before that, with that CIP item. And it's just very important to keep those records safe and keep them on archival paper and things like that. And we did welcome 20 babies in 2018, which is a little bit higher than the last few years. 14 of those were boys and six girls. Interestingly enough, we've already had four this year, and they're all girls. So I guess there's a new trend this year. We're going to have some girls instead of boys. And unfortunately, we also had 40 deaths recorded last year. This lopsided ratio is a trend that has been a concern for years in the community. Trying to get new people and new families into the community has been a struggle. And as the community continues to age, it does change the dynamics of the community, as well as the services being required of the town. One community project that I felt was important to bring back was the Boston Post cane. And it is a tradition that was established in 1909 by the publisher of the Boston Post newspaper. And he sent 700 New England towns an ebbity cane to be given to the oldest resident of town. And Kennebunkport's cane was lost many years ago, and it kind of faded away. But we had a new cane reproduced, and we brought back the tradition. We had a search last year, and the cane was awarded to Frank Hanlon on April 12th. And he was very happy to receive it, as you can see from the picture. So he happily still has the cane, and we're going to keep going with that. And speaking of traditions and community pride, Kennebunkport continued to be one of the highest percentage turnouts in voting last year. As you can see, there were many opportunities for our voters to make their voices heard. We had several town meetings. We had the annual budget validation for the school. We had some state elections. And the integrity of elections is of highest importance to any town clerk. The laws are always changing, and it's challenging to keep up with all those new laws and regulations. So the annual training that we all attend is invaluable, and the Secretary of State's office, as well as main municipal association, provide those trainings for us. And there was an increase in the town meeting salary budget line this year because of the increase of minimum wage next January. It's going up to $12 an hour. So that will affect my election workers. So we had to increase a little bit based on that. So when you put all these numbers together, how does the town clerk's office compare to one of my favorite childhood books, which is Blueberries for Sal by Robert McCloskey? Well, I look at each interaction with the public, whether it's a phone call, an email, someone at our counter, as a blueberry. And if you consider each blueberry in a bucket, like Sal had with her bucket, when she put it in the empty bucket, it went kaplunk and made the funny sound. And as you fill up your bucket, it becomes more and more blueberries. So when you spill them out on the table, you see just how many blueberries you ended up with. Well, I consider each one of our interactions as a blueberry. So when you stop and think about it, how many interactions in the course of a week, or a day, a month, even the year, we have with people, whether they're coming into town as a visitor, or if they're a resident who comes into Town Hall to register their car. There's just so many different ways that we interact with people. And it's just, when you add them all up, there's a lot of touches there. So along those lines, our mission for the 2019 year is to continue to offer our residents the most friendly and efficient service possible, and to continue to grow our knowledge and skill set to be able to offer the best service to those people. So training is the largest portion of our budget, and we pick and choose our classes very carefully, and we try to pick the ones that we know are going to be most beneficial to the town and the residents that we serve. And we're also going to continue with community outreach and education. We'll continue our voter reg drives at Kennebunk High School. We do that twice a year. We'll continue with expanded hours for absentee voting and voter registration. I do at least one Saturday before an election, and a Thursday night as well. And we'll continue with the annual dog photo contest and the Boston Post cane tradition. And like everything in life, there are always challenges. Our small office means more spinning plates, especially when someone is out of the office. There's only three of us, so if someone's on vacation, especially in the summer, it does just make it more work for the rest, the other two. We do have 5% of our budget for Becky Nollet to come in from the assessor's office. She's also one of my deputies on those occasions when we need her. So she's a big help when we are short-staffed. And the ever-increasing responsibilities from state mandates and ordinances is also a challenge that we're just always trying to catch up with. State law requires that we offer absentee voting 30 days before an election. And on those bigger elections, like the primary last June caught us off-guard a little bit, and presidential elections, we can have up to 1,000 extra people coming through our doors that month before for absentee voting, which is great. We love seeing the people, and we love offering the service, but it just makes it harder to keep those plates spinning in the air. And we've also noticed that our summer season is becoming longer and longer. We now start in April with chaser tickets, beach passes, summer car and boat registrations, and it continues right through Columbus Day with the leaf peepers and the bus tours. So our June to August summer season has expanded on both ends, and it just makes it a little bit harder to keep up with the day-to-day sometimes. And infrastructure is always a challenge. Workspace and parking at Town Hall are very limited. There's no room for growth whatsoever. And as you can see from these pictures, this is our vault, where we keep all of our important records and files and documents that need to be kept safe. And we have boxes lined on the floors. We have boxes on top of each other. It's just not an ideal condition for the documents that are so important. It's for this reason that we've asked for $10,000 in the budget for a municipal facility needs assessment, so we can see what can be done and what options we might have to help take care of some of the cramping. So that's pretty much it. I just have a poem I'd like to read to end things. It sums up the clerk's job pretty well. "If they want to get married or fish in the sea, if they vote by machine, or they vote absentee, whatever their problems turn out to be, it's the work of the clerk of the town. We're concerned with such things as the sex of a dog, and how many bees in a hive, and we file, we record, we attach and attest, anything, be it dead or alive. Whatever goes on in the town, we record, and often we do it with little reward. We often go crazy, but never get bored. Oh, it's great to be a clerk of the town." And that pretty much sums up why I love my job so much, and I love being part of this community, because it's different every day. You never know what's going to happen. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Wonderful.
Great.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
So if we move to page 43, your purple sheets. We're just going to remind people, the capital budget in total has decreased from last year by $122,000, as we stated at the last meeting. Last year, we did come forward and ask for some additional funds for the Parks and Rec Building, had the special town meeting. So that was added to last year's capital. But overall, over the past five years, we tried to keep our capital expenses fairly flat. As I've said before, we don't want to rob from capital to pay for operating costs. So with that, I'm going to start going through these capital items. And because Werner has a couple of PowerPoint slides, I'm going to jump to page 229 in our capital budget.
What page?
So 229 is the request for $67,000 to do the market revaluation.
So, so the way that the, good evening, everyone.
So you want to do the comp plan first?
Yeah, I'd like to do the comp plan first.
Okay. So on, earlier, you don't have to go to the sheet. It's a very boring sheet. I'll just tell you what's there. In the general admin budget, we have two other items. One of them is $25,000 for a Vision software upgrade. And he's going to talk to you about that. And then we also have $90,000 requested to do the comprehensive plan again. And then the last thing he's going to talk about in the revale is the $67,000 we are asking for the sales market analysis. So Werner, you're up.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to start with, you know, the first discussion point is the update for the comprehensive plan. And so it's hard to believe that we're looking at an update for the comp plan. It feels like we just got done doing the 2012 plan, but we're coming up on a time for an update. So per the state, your comprehensive plans are essentially only good for about 10 years. And so there's a requirement and a need to update those plans. And so you may ask the question, so why does a town need to update its comprehensive plan? And so, for numerous reasons. One is that, you know, the comprehensive plan is that document that, you know, that as residents, they really have an opportunity to weigh in on the things that are important to them. And these things will range anywhere from, you know, from land use planning, to our historic and our natural resources, to our hazards, disasters, emergency, our emergency action plans, our energy conservation, transportation, housing. All those items that affect our community are outlined within the comprehensive plan. And so it's important to, you know, for us to update the data that we use for that plan, as well as give residents opportunity to weigh in on that. But importantly, it also, it serves as the underpinning for a lot of our rules and our ordinances. It's, we're required to have our ordinances consistent with our comprehensive plan. And so it's, you know, it's important to have a good up-to-date document for that. One of the things that we've also taken note of, that's, you know, that is practically important, is that a consistent comprehensive plan also helps when it comes to making grant requests. So for instance, the ships grant, you know, while I can't say specifically that that's why we got the ship grant funds, but we've been pretty successful with those. And having a consistent, an approved and up-to-date comprehensive plan is one of the requirements, and it's one of the nice boxes to check on the application whenever you're making those financial requests. Now, we did, we do have in the current comp plan a pretty expansive chapter regarding the economic importance of the fishing industry. And I'd like to think that that chapter really helped in terms of the funding for, specifically for government wharf. And again, as I stated, much of our data at this point is going to be out of date relatively soon. So to that end, you know, we've, we've looked, myself, Southern Maine Regional Planning, as well as the Growth Planning Committee, we've looked at a number of different communities that have recently done updates to comprehensive plans to get an idea and a range in terms of, you know, what a comp plan rewrite would cost today. And so we've, we've come to a budget request number of $90,000 to do that update. We have seen significantly smaller communities do it for less, and we've seen smaller communities do it for significantly more. And so we feel that that, that that number is an appropriate budget range for the update. But one of our other goals with the comp plan is that, you know, historically, the comp plan has really been a document that is, has been primarily done and existed in a paper format. And so, you know, because we want it to be used, and we want folks to engage, one of our goals with, with this rewrite is to have it in a format that functions well in a, in a digital environment, as well as, you know, the paper version. And so, you know, stay tuned for, again, a more up-to-date and user-friendly version of your comprehensive plan.
Werner, how much was the last comprehensive plan? Do you remember what the cost was?
So I believe when the comprehensive plan, I believe the budget for the comp plan, when it was rewritten in 2000, the 2003 version, I'm going to have to go by versions here, I believe that was in the $40,000 to $50,000 range, and that would have been in the, would have been 2001 that that process started. You wound up with a comp plan in 2003 that didn't pass. And then, I can't tell you what was then spent additionally on top of that to get to the 2005 version. And then from 2005 to 2012, most of that work was done in-house. We did use some consultants. I would say between '05 and where we landed with '12, I probably spent somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'm going to say, less than $20,000 for consultants to kind of help us along the way. But it took significantly longer, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any questions that folks may have for the comprehensive plan? Ted?
When you mention the...
Microphone. Please. No, please.
Don't, don't hurt him, Barbara.
When you mention the ship something grant?
Ship grant, yes.
Yeah. When you mention things like that, could you just briefly tell us what that is?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. So ship grant is a grant program every year that's administered by the state. And it's, it specifically relates to funding for waterfront projects. And so you typically see funds for pier rebuilds. You know, government wharf is a, was a perfect project for a ship grant. But they're all primarily surrounding waterfront access and working waterfront-type projects.
Yeah, and it should be noted that we will probably be applying again when we do Cape Wharf's pier, looking towards 2020. We don't have a set date yet, but yeah, it's a very significant, I believe it was a significant amount of money that went into government wharf from the state.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. And we were awarded that grant twice for government wharf. All right. So if there's no questions on the comp plan, I'll move on to the next request, which is a $25,000 request to update our appraisal software to version eight. This is Vision 8. So Vision, Vision appraisal is a software that we use for, for all of our assessing work. You know, the town's been using this software, this company, since 1998, when we, when we first went from the paper cards into an electronic format. You know, that, the company has been, has been a good, consistent company to work with, and I have to say, has been one of the most robust software programs that I've ever dealt with. We've very few issues with that software. To that end, Vision is the platform that our current version of Vision is built on an Oracle platform. And at some point in the near future, and when we say near future, that's within the next year or two, is being sunsetted. So everybody just think of what happened to Windows XP. Well, that's what's happening to our current version of Vision, is that it's no longer going to be supported. And so to that end, the new platform, Vision 8, is built on a SQL database. And from what I understand, I understand just enough to be dangerous when it comes to, you know, when it comes to that type of language. But from what I understand, you know, it's, it's, you know, the platform itself is significantly more robust when it comes to dealing with malware and virus attacks than an Oracle database. So bottom line is, is that our current version is not going to be supported any, anymore. And so we would like to continue with Vision appraisal for this particular software, such that upgrade to the next version of it is, will cost us $25,000 to do that. Are there any questions regarding Vision? None? So our next request is specific, is also in the assessing range, and it's to have a market, a market equalization analysis done. And so you say that, gosh, that's, that's a lot of, that's a mouthful right there. And so why, what is it? Why, and why do we, why do we need to do it? And so I'll just, I want to point this particular chart out to you, just so you understand a little bit of the trend, you know, and what the lines are referring to. So if you, you see where we had, where we have the big dip first, you know, that drops down to 2008, where we're at, where we're at 39%. And so what you're looking at there is you're looking at the town's ratio, ratio to market. So that's the overall valuation of the town in comparison to market. And so that was where we were right before the 2009 reevaluation. And so the purple line also will, shows you what the mill rate was doing. And so, so as everybody knows who kept track of their tax bill, after the revale, the, you know, the valuation of the town significantly increased, as we brought it up to approximately 90% of market, which of course led to a significant drop in the mill rate. And so what we're seeing now, due to market sales, but also in big part due to a rising cost of construction, is that ratio is starting to drop now. So we're starting to see where, where our valuations are essentially no longer in line with, with where we were in 2009 as, as part of the revale. And so what we're seeing is that, you know, whenever we put in, whenever we input a, say, a new building project, and I'll just use a, you know, a $500,000 house, for instance, where in 2009, you know, if you were putting that into the system using the current construction tables, that value would have been close to the project cost. You know, it wouldn't have been $500,000, but it probably would have landed in, you know, 470, for, you know, 490,000 range. What we're seeing now is that, using the same criteria, that $500,000 market value home comes in at, you know, a $397,000 valuation. And so, so where we started off in 2009 with assessed values at about 90% of market, what we're seeing now, when we look at sales and construction costs, is that we're somewhere now between 74... now between 74% to 165% of market. So, so instead of this narrow, in this narrow range of equity, we're now seeing a larger disparity of equity, again, between that 74% to 165%. Have I lost anybody yet? So...
Yeah, two questions. One, I can understand the 74%, but why the 165%? What's caused that kind of deviation?
That's a great question. You know, and that's part of, and that's, that's part of what this analysis, you know, is, is for. I mean, because a lot of these, you know, when we look at sales, I mean, we go through a process of where we, we make a determination as to whether or not this is considered a market sale or not. And so, there are some that we just look at and say, that's not a market sale, because there's some other factor that influences that price that this wouldn't happen on the market. So, we even remove some of those, those outliers that are, that are significantly higher. But I think what we're, you know, what we're just seeing is that we're, we're seeing, you know, like we saw in two, before 2009, waterfront property, I would say specifically, is selling for significantly higher than what, than what we're seeing on the assessment. And so, you take that and you couple that with the increase in construction costs, and I think that's why you're seeing some of these, you know, some of these higher than, you know, higher than market. You know, we had, you know, property out, even in Farm and Forest, I think, that came in at probably a $400,000 assessment that sold on the market for 600,000. You know, and so, why, why that is, that's part of the reason for the, you know, for the analysis piece. You know, it's, it's not our part really to judge as to why, you know, why it sold for that, but it's to, to look at, to look at the neighborhoods and see, all right, where are we out of adjustment? You know, what's, you know, what is, what is happening with the sales and, and make adjustments accordingly.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, what's on that?
So, I'll, I'll get to that.
Okay.
Yep. So, what do we get for a, for this type of market analysis? And so, what we, so what we get is that we get a review of, we get a review of the past two years' worth of sales. We get a field review of, of all properties in town, but it's not at the same level that the 2009 revale was. So, 2009 revale was interior inspection and measurement of every property in Kennybunkport. And that's not what this does. This is a, this is essentially a quick visit to every property to make sure that we don't have any major disparities out there, or, and/or just a check on the most recent properties that have been developed. But then, it's more of an, of an analysis of our cost tables, a review of our current neighborhoods, and then, of course, there's a mailing, a mailing notice to taxpayers involved, along with informal meetings and informational regarding their final assessment. So, all of that piece is part of, would be part of this analysis. Next slide. So, the state recommends that, that we do a revale every 10 years, or if our ratio is exceeding 110%, or if it falls below 70% of market, along with a quality rating of 20 or below. I'm not gonna get into what exactly the quality rating is, but I can tell you where we're at currently. So, currently, our quality rating is 16, and our ratio is at an, is at 88%. And so, it's, we know just from looking at the trends that we're on, on the, we're on the down, on the downhill slope of, you know, becoming out of compliance. The other piece of this that is, as our ratio continues to drop, the direct effect that folks see is, is a change in the value of our homestead and our veterans exemptions that we can, that we can give out to folks. And so, so as that ratio drops currently, the homestead exemption is 19,400. They would've been eligible for 20,000 had we had a, had we had a better ratio. Again, I think our ratio is just gonna continue to drop based on the trend that we see, so the homestead exemptions and veterans exemptions will continue to decrease in value. So, whenever, what, you know, what we would expect a consultant to do for this, what we think this will accomplish is that by, by, by doing this at this particular point in time, is that, you know, we estimate the cost to be at $70,000. We've had some discussions with other communities and consultants that would, you know, that have estimated that, were we to, to wait significantly longer and get in a position where we need a full revale, we would be, it would cost us upwards of a half a million dollars to do a full revale like, like we did in 2009. So, again, we're not, we're, we're not in the same position that we were in 2009, where, where everything was, I would say, extremely out of whack in terms of valuation, but it's a trend that we see happening, and, you know, this, the market equalization, you know, is a, is a way to essentially tune it up, as opposed to going for a complete rebuild, I think is probably the best way to, to look at it. Can I answer any questions?
So, what's your idea about a full revale in the future? Are we four or five years away from that, if we do the $70,000 pin house, or?
Yeah.
Or longer?
I mean, I think if, you know, if, if we carry the trend, if we carry the trend out, you know, we're probably, I'm estimating maybe another four or five years before we hit that, you know, half a million dollar revale stage. And so, you know, the idea with, you know, with this equalization is that, A, we don't have to go through that process in that, you know, we're able to just kinda tune things up and bring us back up, you know, bring us back up in that, you know, that 90% range, you know, as opposed to just letting the trend, letting the trend continue to drop. And really, what it does, and i- is, it creates larger inequities, you know, amongst property owners, is, is, is what you'll see. The other thing is, well, that, you know, whenever, at our last meeting, we talked about how much construction value that we were seeing in town, and so, I, you know, I gave you a number of, you know, 41 million that we had reported for construction value. So, keeping in mind, you know, a, a new house that, say, you know, builds, builds out for a half, I'll just use the half a million dollar range, there's really about $100,000 worth of, you know, assessed taxable value that's, that's left on the table at this point, you know, without that, you know, without that market adjustment.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Would you be doing all parcels and land, including commercial and, and land, or, this is just not residential, is it?
It would be a look at, it would be a look at all properties in Kennybunkport. Yep. I mean, for activity, we primarily see, I mean, the, the, the activity is on the residential side. You know, we have, we don't have a ton of comps, you know, for, for commercial, but I would expect that to be a, it would, it would be a look at all of those. Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Werner.
Thank you. So, Mike, we can shut the projector off for now. So, if everybody goes to page 211, we're gonna go in order now.
Does that mean two?
Yes.
Digital two.
T.O. So, on page 211, you'll see the administration. The first item is the historical preservation of records for $5,000. That's what Tracy talked about in her presentation. We don't have any building improvements this year, and we have special projects. So, that includes the 90,000 in the comp plan update that Werner talked about, as well as the 25,000 in the Vision software upgrade. There's also $10,000 for the municipal facility needs assessment I discussed the last time. That's looking at both the town hall and fire and chems needs for the future, so what makes the most sense in terms of programming space, as well as square footage, and where we should best place them in, in construction estimates. Does anybody have any question on administration? If not, we're gonna jump to page 213, and the police, Chief Sanford's gonna give an overview.
Good evening, folks. In the capital request this year, I have my typical request to replace one cruiser. I think now it's even more important that we stay on that schedule and try to replace one every year, because I've had to keep one now, now that we have the SROs. I had to keep an older car in the fleet, so I'm looking to replace one of the Dodge Chargers with a new Dodge Charger. We've had very good luck with those cars. They're cost-effective, and I won't have to buy any new equipment, hopefully, to swap those over. Try to keep it simple.
We like that.
It was good.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Okay. Communications is listed on your agenda, but there's no request this year. So, if we go to page 217, Chief Everett will go over the fire requests.
Good evening. My requests are pretty much the same as what, looking back in, what they have been looking at apparatus. We're, we're looking to downsize the fleet. We have a few trucks right now that I've taken out, we've taken out of a rotation to replace, so we're not gonna be replacing those. But I would ask that you continue the $130,000 into the truck reserve account, 'cause that makes sense and makes a big-ticket item a little less painful.
Can you tell, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you, can you tell me what you're gonna take out of rotation? Do you know yet, or?
Yeah, we, we have the, the two oldest trucks, as, if they start to cost too much money in, in maintenance, that's when they'd go. More than likely, the ladder in, in Cape Ladder Four is 30 years old, and the engine out here, Engine 13, is 28, I think it is.
Thank you.
So, that's it on, on vehicles. I've been trying to get the department to a point, vehicle-wise, of having three engines, a ladder, the squad truck, and a tank truck, and go down to two brush trucks as well, along with a couple of the auxiliary vehicles, like my vehicle, and the couple inflatable boats. For radios, we have what's been a kind of a normal, you know, 5,000 in there, to keep going with a, with a process of, most, a lot of our radios are, are in the 20-year-old range, and we're starting to see, when we take them out, because of a, a not-working issue, that it's cheaper to replace the radio with a new one than it would be to, to fix it. And also, what, what, with the reserve that has, has built up, in that, we're looking that in, in '21 to have to replace the base station antenna and cable at the police department for our radio system. And right now, unless something, as long as something doesn't happen, we should be able to do that with the reserves that we have now, so I wouldn't, I didn't wanna take it out this year, but I, I figured I'd wait, and we could take, you know, look at, not having to have it in there next year. That money is, right, the pricing I've gotten is around $14,000 to do that work. So, that's some, some good news. They had started a process to plan for replacing our breathing apparatus, and to, I kinda refined it a little bit to make it more like the, the truck account, a little bit of money over, but the same amount of money over a, a certain period, an eight-year cycle, would get us to where, when it comes time in '28 to replace our air packs, we should, we should have the money to, to do it. And be able to buy cylinders as we need it. Cylinders, unfortunately, in the air packs, cylinders have a, have a shelf life. We can only use them right now for 15 years, and once they're 15 years old from the data manufacturer, we have to replace them. There is some stuff coming that might change that, but right now, it's not what we can do, which is a, a different type of testing out there. BLS for, which is basically main OSHA, hasn't come on board with saying, yes, you can do this. And, of course, the manufacturers are fighting it, because they enjoy the fact that every 15 years, you need to replace all your cylinders. And the person, going on, if, no one has any questions, going on personal protective clothing, the personal protective equipment is our clothing. There, I asked for $1,500 more than what's been the norm for a bit, because of, I made some changes to the, to the garment we're wearing. I got some lighter fabrics, some fabric that breathes a little bit better and is also moves a little bit better for the firefighter wear. Like in our, in my operating budget, we're, we're an older department, and this helps with, not having firefighter fatigue, and, which would turn into injuries and, and things like that, so. But I was able to take away a few items, like last, last year, the gear we were buying, then we had to spend about $400 to put a harness on it, which has to be specially put onto the pants and have loops, and so, there's labor and materials there. So, it was about $400 to outfit that. And overall, I went up about $30 a set, taking out the harness. The harness also causes repairs to have to be made, 'cause it's worn on the outside of the pants, the outer shell, it starts to wear through, gets a hole, it has to be, we have to take it out of service, repair it. So, there's costs, too, that we're, we're getting rid of. And so, I changed the harness to a gut belt, and we can, we, while we can't repel with this gut belt, we can, the firefighters can use it if they had to bail out of a building with the, the rope systems that we supply, to, you know, in an emergency, to, to save themselves, type thing. But, you know, we don't do a lot of rappelling, again, I'm going wood, but this was a, I think, a good change. And then, the other reason it, it went up is, there's usually about a two-and-a-half percent increase on, on the, from the manufacturer every year. And that's...
So, in general, all these fire accounts are established as reserve accounts? So, last year, for PPE, for example, we didn't need to replace as many, so we did lower that last year. But in general, these accounts are put in a reserve account, so that hopefully, over time, we can keep a consistency in our funding level, rather than seeing jumps up.
Right. Yeah. And where, where I was just gonna go, is it's basically eight sets a year. And so, the reason for the increase is, I can't buy the eight sets for the 17,000 that we've been doing, so that's why it goes up to 18.5. And the eight sets gets us through everybody about every 10 years, which is NFPA's recommendation.
So, are there any questions for Chief Everett? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Claus and Mr. Simeone, we're doing the Capitol Outlay Highway. So, we're on page 219.
So, for, we've got pretty quiet Capitol, Capitol equipment vehicles this year. We're just getting a Z-trac mower, a zero-turn mower, replacing our, our old one from 2005. And we're looking to replace the, the Ford Ranger, which has, which we'd put off for a couple of years. We've got that truck and the one-ton coming up next year. We probably, what I, we will only probably be replacing one of those for a frontline truck. We don't need both, both those as frontline trucks. So, we'll get one pickup truck, but I think Bob wants to get rid of the one-ton first and keep the Ranger, so that's why we moved the Ranger up. But that's where we're going. So, this year, we're gonna get a new plow, you know, four-wheel, four-wheel drive pickup with a plow, and, and probably get, get rid of the, the 350 that I, that I'm, that I'm using.
You gonna trade it in or sell it outright?
We'll, we'll get a trade number, look at it, and if it's, if it's good, we'll take it. That's the quickest way to do it. If it's, if it's just peanuts, then we can always just try selling it.
Okay.
So, the total request for the truck and the Z-track are 47,000, but we do have 41,000 left in the highway equipment reserve, because Mike got a great deal on our tractor that we got last year.
The factory sidewalk tractor saved a lot.
Yep. So, you got a good deal. So you got a good deal. So we're only requesting 6,000 in the budget. Does anybody have any questions on the highway equipment? So Mike, we are going, so on page 220, just for your reference, that's the replacement schedule on all the highway equipment. So you can see the pieces that they have and when they're looking to replace them. But if we go to page 221 and 222, you're going to see the request for the road improvements, and then the list on 222 of the actual roads.
So we're doing some overlay work and some reconstruction work. I'm trying to, I've got Atlantic Avenue in there because that's just a little road that we haven't taken care of that's falling apart. Jeffrey's Way, I'd like to get done because we're doing King's Highway also from that section from Sandpoint out to the East End. So if I get that, Jeffrey's Way, and we are doing the final overlay on New Bitterford Road, so I can get all that, that whole end paved at once. We've already budgeted for the New Bitterford Road, but I've put that off because of the work Foglio's doing up there. I want to get him out of the way before I finish pave that. So I'm just trying to tie in, tie in that end of Goose Rock Beach and get that taken care of. Mas Cove Lane, all the work that was done with the library, we had talked to them. There was some waterline work, and that took a, that took a good hit during all the construction, and so I'd like to overlay that. Willie Road and then Winter Harbor Road, once again, that's in there because we're working down at the New Bitterford Road end. I'd like to get, once, if I can get the paver in there, he can get all that work done at once in the fall and get out of the way. So if I can group a bunch of roads together that need it, that I try to group them on the list for one year. Willie Road out on, out off of Goose Rock Road is my last little subdivision road out in that area that hasn't been overlaid, and I'd like to get that done. And that'll tie up that end of town pretty good. Wilds District Road is just a, is just shoulder work. We're gonna start the prep work on that in, you know, to look, we'll be coming to you with a reconstruction request next year. Mills Road, we're looking to finish that off. I know everyone's been patient out there. We have, we still have some funding from last year's, last year's capital that we haven't spent. We're still in fiscal 19. But this is to finish up the, the work from beach, from about the campground out to the Bitterford Town Line. All we, all we got were the, the bike lanes were reconstructed. We didn't get the overlay done there. We only did the overlay from Beachwood out to the campground. This'll finish that off. We're actually getting the state to chip in over half of that. We're just doing the shim work, which is about 3/4 inch, and they're gonna do a 1-inch overlay at their cost. So that, sort of, instead of doing it as an MPI 50/50, they found some funds in another spot, and it's actually more than 50% that they're kicking in. So instead of us having to fund half of, 1 and 3/4, we're just funding 3/4.
Good. Hey, Mike, on here, and this is just more technical, it says, you know, whether they're state roads or not, it lists Mills Road as not a state road. Is that incorrect?
That is incorrect. I apologize.
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure. I knew what I was talking about.
That should be yes.
Mike, one question. On North Street, whatever they did last year, I don't know if it was a water company or a water company kind of messed up. North Street's going all the way out to five corners or five points out there.
So that was funded, that is funded in FY19, and we're gonna reconstruct that section of road in the spring. That's why it's just got a patch in it, because that's all gonna get ground up in the spring.
Okay.
They've got the new waterline in now.
So you won't be able to leave your house again, Dave? So, yes. He'll sleep here. That's right. We'll leave the light on for you. So on page 223, we have the sidewalk requests.
So the sidewalk, part of our DOT funding is for Main Street. We got some, we got a 50/50 split on fixing that little section of Main Street from Spring Street to North Street. And that sidewalk is in pretty rough shape right there. So we're gonna take, we're gonna put some new granite curb in there, in that section, to match into the curb where the handicap, where the pedestrian light is, and bring that, match that back into Spring Street. And it's gonna, and we're gonna mill and fill the road, but we've got to rebuild the sidewalk there. And that's, that's gonna be our big sidewalk project. And also, some of the sidewalk funds go to the Mills Road shoulder work that we're doing.
Does anybody have any questions or comment from Mike? Thank you. So next, we are on page 225, and Carol Cook is coming to talk about recreation.
Good evening. So we did get into my capital budget a little bit last week. There were people who had some comments and questions. But now I'd like to do a very brief presentation to take you back to that point. So first of all, I don't even know when it was exactly that I presented to Laurie a figure of $30,000 to renovate, totally redo our existing skating area. We, at the same time, in trying to get more refined figures, got in touch with Steve Doe of Sebaggo Technics, who had originally done the project for us, because we felt that if we were going to renovate that project there, it was going to definitely require not only engineering services, but planning board approval. So it was actually Steve Doe who came back with the fact that he thought we should consider a kit that they've had really good luck with up in Canada. And everybody knows, Canada is hockey. So, so we looked into it, and I then presented to Laurie a figure of $12,000, and that was going to cover not only the kit, but the water and everything we needed to do the project on Parsons Field beside the new rec building. Then, when it came time to actually put the budget out to you folks, Laurie took it down to $2,000 because we have some revenue, or, excuse me, some funds that were held over for the construction of the building. So it's 2,000 now, just so that we could have this conversation. So, so I just want to point out, based on the comments that were made last week, it was asked if it was a viable project. And I think that you have to consider what the value is to the community. It was suggested that we just provide transportation to Kennebunk, and we're not in the transportation business, we're in the parks and recreation business. So, so we do definitely feel that it's an amenity that we should have here in town for our citizens. We talked a little bit last week about the idea of it being someplace that they could play hockey, and that that would be a real draw to the facility. So beyond that, I just want to point out, we're not trying to replicate what Kennebunk has. We're trying to set up an amenity for our citizens that will be used in a very different way from what Kennebunk's project is. So I guess, if there are questions, that's where we're at, at this point.
If you're not in the...
Doug, I mean, not Ted, I'm looking at Doug's.
If you're not in the transportation business, why not sell the bus?
Okay. We do use the bus for certain programs that we run.
I was just kidding.
Okay. Go ahead, then I'll stop.
But to Carol's answer, I think what they have in Kennebunk is very impressive, and it was also, I believe, give, the majority of that was through a very generous donation. But that's a lot different than, you know, what we have here. And I think what we have here, I live next to that skating rink, and it's used a lot in the winter. You know, I'd like to see it stay there myself. I think it's worth investing in, but I'm not gonna fight you over it. Hopefully, you can recreate what, you know, in attendance at Parsons Field, what you have on Main Street and Cape Porpoise.
Right. Well, we have every reason to believe that we can have not just something that equals it, but something that's much better, just based on the issues that we've had with trying to keep ice in it and the, the conditions of the existing facility.
What are you gonna do for lighting, Carol? Because it's usually used in the evening.
Right. What I, what I had priced out were solar lights, so it will not be anything that, that they can play hockey at night, even though I know that they play hockey at night down there now. But that's our, that's our standard line. It's not safe to play hockey when it's not well-lit, and we don't plan on putting lights up there that are gonna be glowing, you know, to, to make that fun.
It's very close to restaurant.
It is very close to the restroom and to our new facility. It'll make it much easier for us to maintain. The current facility is difficult even to get the parking lot plowed out in time for us to get in there to get it cleaned off. And it's, it's been a difficult project since the beginning. And I hate to lose out on a project, but I think this is a, definitely a better solution for us. Yes?
You're planning on resurfacing or redoing Parsons Field, correct?
Yes. The area that we are planning on putting the ice in, if you will, is not in the general play area of the field. So we do have money in our regular budget for top dressing on the regular part of the field, because that hadn't been done since 1988, when the field was reconstructed. So now, as you mow or run around or whatever, you definitely feel all the dips. And if any of you have seen us when we mow, it's, it's a challenge. It's airborne. So, yeah.
So this proposed skating rink will not be on top of?
It will not be in the play area where we play soccer or softball. It'll be off to the side.
And then what do you plan to do with the existing facility on Route 9?
I have no plans for it. I think that that's a town management issue.
You want to buy it, Dan?
Discussed at the last meeting.
Yep.
Well, we had, no, at the last selectments meeting, there was discussion of it.
May I be so bold as to ask?
Well, there was, no, absolutely, absolutely. There was talk of giving it to the Kennebunk Port. What do we call it?
Housing Trust.
Heritage Housing.
Heritage Housing Trust.
What is the Kennebunk Port Heritage Housing Trust? I have no clue.
That's the affordable housing program that we endorsed about a year ago, and have a board of directors set up for, and are looking at places to build affordable housing.
Okay. I didn't know that was, I didn't realize that was its name.
Yes.
Yeah. So yes, there was some discussion. There was no action taken, but there was discussion about that at our last selectments meeting. And I'm sure there'll be more discussion about it in, you know, meetings to come.
So does anybody have any other questions for Carol?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. So on page 233 is your last capital item. I'm gonna ask Mike to come back up, just in case there are any other questions. Yes, you, Michael. So this is our capital outlay peers account. So as we stated, we normally put a certain amount of money in our peer reserve account each year. Over the past few years, it has been more money because we undertook the government war reconstruction project, which had been long outstanding. We did receive a $250,000 grant for the small harbor improvement program. So now, we are looking at Cape Porpoise Pier. Do you want to give people just a brief understanding of what's happening there?
We, we've been working with Barney Baker, Baker Design Consultants, on peer renovation work there. The issue we have is undermining of the rubble wall underneath the, underneath the pier building. So we're looking at sometime in the near future, replacing that building, which means, replacing that rubble wall, which means replacing the building. So we've shown you guys some schematic ideas on that, and we're moving forward with that, working with our lovely things on FEMA flood maps and that, which is driving our costs and our designs. But that's, that's moving forward, and we're trying to get that finalized with the FEMA requirements there.
So the projected cost could be 200, 2.5 million dollars for that project. We, one of the issues we're having is the FEMA flood maps have the elevation requirement for the base of the building at a much higher level, based on the current proposed map. So it would have to be 12 feet higher than it is now. I want you to imagine a big building, 12 feet in the air. So we also, when we put in our appeal through our FEMA mud, flood map appeals, we did do transex right there at Cape Porpoise. They, the proposal through Ransom Environmental is that that would drop by about four feet. But we also are looking at other ways, inventive, intuitive ways in which we can address flooding issues, but not have a building in sight that is unusable. So we need time to work through FEMA and DEP. We've also applied to DOT through the Small Harbor Improvement Program again. Remember that when they ask you if you want bond money for harbors and waterfront in November each year, that's the money that goes to fund projects like that. So we are still gathering that and putting the engineering and design together. We are probably another year or two out from that, based on what funding we can get from the state. But any money we can put away in the reserve account is beneficial at this point.
This is gonna be a two-year project, correct?
So in order to qualify, I'm trying to qualify for 750,000, which they've never given anybody. And so, but we're hoping to at least get 500,000 in this project, but it means we'd have to do it over a two-year period. So that's another piece of the design, to make all the monies and numbers come together. So right now, this money would just be reserved for that. One day, we're gonna need it. Any questions on that? Thank you, Mike and Chris. So at this point, we are done with our capital review budget for tonight. We are happy to answer any questions from the prior meeting or this meeting, or get additional information that anybody thinks they need. Anything?
Yeah, I, if you ask, I can't read this stuff. Going back to the revaluation, from what I read nationwide, market values for waterfront properties are starting to take a turn. I mean, they've peaked over the years because they've been very much in demand. But with the increased concern about global warming and ocean sea level rise, it's starting to turn those prices down. And Kennebunk Port derives a large percentage of their tax revenue from waterfront properties. I just wonder, and there's no simple answer to this, but revaluing the properties now, what happens in three or four years when the prices of those waterfront properties start to decline significantly?
They won't, they won't, they...
You don't think so?
I don't think so.
That's because you don't live with the tide coming up your front yard.
Right.
Well, I, that's my opinion.
Right. I think that anytime you go out for a revale, I can't tell you in my 30-year career how many times we've done a revale and then there's been a recession. And so there's never a perfect time. So you look in your crystal ball, and I think that what we're telling you is that we are seeing that, that inequality ratio is becoming a bit of a concern for us, and that we're just trying to be proactive with that. If that changes, then we'll have to adjust that.
I understand.
When we see those market sales, yeah. Yes.
Thank you. We need more microphones.
I'll get you a personal one, too.
Dave just made a comment. I wonder if Werner could corroborate that, that the, a significant portion of our tax base is waterfront properties. I don't believe that.
So if you're looking at number of parcels versus value, you know, so, you know, the majority of our parcels, I would say, are not directly waterfront, but I would say that our waterfront, that our waterfront areas are certainly carry a significant portion of the town. that our waterfront areas certainly carry a significant portion of the town's valuation.
What is that percentage?
I can't give you that statistic right now, but I'm happy to bring it to you at a later meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Barbara, we have a selectments meeting to conduct this evening. Do you guys have anything else you'd like to bring before this meeting this evening?
Yes, a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. I'd like to adjourn, but we have other business to take care of.
That's all right.
It is. I need you to stick around until about April. I don't need you to stick around. Probably as soon as it's off, as soon as people are ready and they can. Every now and again, it helps me keep it away down there.
We have one little boat. We have three boats, three boats. Now, we have, we have two fire fire boats in the harbor. So that's it.
They all want to get out there. Oh, we're not going to hurt anything. Yeah.
Well, we may have to protect.
I hear Debbie will take in early May or certainly in April. It's going to be feeling like June. If we throw people out between May, then our conditioning rail company is great and it recovers much faster if we get out there. If we let them out earlier, they've got scars in them that don't heal because the grass is dormant. And when you scarred dormant grass, it's not good.
Oh, yes. Well, hopefully, hopefully I can, well, hopefully I can do a good job, so. Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, because, because I'm a student, I don't know, and sometimes we don't come back until Tuesday morning. But if I had to come back for Tuesday, I would.
So we're still, we're still rolling. We're still rolling.
Okay.
People at home, they know the good.
That's okay. Good for them.
Let's get this thing up.
All right, are we ready to get going here?
I sure am.
All right, we're already in order. We've had our joint meeting. I'd like to approve the February 28th, and we'll take them one at a time, February 28th, 2019 Selectment Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And the March 7th Selectment Meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Public forum, this is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the board this evening with anything that is not on the agenda. Nina?
Hi, I'm Nina Perlmutter from 13 Locke Street. I'm also on the Shade Tree Committee, and I wanted to tell you tonight about a talk that I'm giving, not because I'm so biased that I think everyone should come to my talk, but because I'm addressing basically something that the Shade Tree has been talking about for a long time. And that is because we couldn't really find a plot of land for an arboretum because people aren't very educated about trees. And we see a lot of building and trees coming down and people wanting to take down trees when they want to plant them. We've talked about making the whole town an arboretum, basically. And Suzanne, who is our former chair, did a very nice job with one of our interns in putting together a tree walk through town, which was a start on this. But I'm going to address it even further into why a town can become an arboretum. And several towns have done this. It's going to be a talk that covers not only the town and its trees and also the village parcel, which we've been looking at because there's undevelopable land on there, which could be incorporated into this, just, it's a suggestion. I'm not, you know, making a formal plea for this, but how it could connect to all of this. That talk is tomorrow at the library, the sixth, not tomorrow, I'm sorry. I get my dates mixed up. Saturday, the 16th, okay, from 2:00 to 3:30. I'll have some nice slides. And I want to talk about a system that's on a SQL database, by the way, from Bartlett Tree, that would make our tree system, basically, our, what do you want, tree inventory, much more viable, much more open to the public, with more useful data in it in ways that it can be carved out, not only for maintenance, for highway maintenance, but also for visitors as well. And the difference between tagging the trees and putting on a QR code, the system is not very expensive. I'm going to give this, part of this talk again to the Board of Selectmen on April 26th, I think it is. Twenty-fifth. Twenty-fifth, okay, we have it planned. A much shorter talk on this. We've sat through, the Shade Tree Committee members sat through an hour and a half presentation by Bartlett Tree on this system, and it's quite a sophisticated system, but one that isn't very expensive to get Bartlett to start and initiate the whole system to take over, basically, our tree viewer system. It could be incorporated with the SQL database that we're going on to, and the town could eventually take it over to maintain it itself. It's a very flexible system. So I wanted to make the Board of Selectmen aware of that. If you want my full talk, come on Saturday. I think John is going to have some refreshments, if you want, but I will be giving a short talk to the board anyway on April 25th.
Don't forget to bring refreshments to that one, too.
Oh, okay. John, that's your department.
Thank you, Nina. Good luck with your talk. All right. John?
I wasn't going to speak, but I think it's important to point out with the Shade Tree Committee and the future of the town itself, that we need to take into consideration the value of the trees to the economic-cultural value, economic and cultural heritage of this town. A lot can be done as we move into the future and the real need for looking at green technology, looking at green alternatives to various kinds of city plans and so forth, that we begin to look at the trees as part of what draws people here, what makes it the town. And that's very important. And I think oftentimes, we overlook it. And we, as the Shade Tree Committee, sponsored a three-part series this winter in February, and Nina's is the last one on Saturday, where we invited also Jeff Tarling from the, he was the arborist at the park division up in, recreational division up in Portland. You know, we got very few people there, even though we did a great deal of advertising. I just think it's important for us to begin to consider what role trees are playing, not only in the present, but in the future, and what that means for tourism, what that means for the attraction of living here, what that means for land values, what that means for all kinds of ecological concerns, if we're concerned about climate change, we're concerned about water problems. Trees are essential in so many different ways. And so I just thought I'd mention that. And hopefully, in the future, when we have this kind of series, and we will have one next year, we can, we can call upon the Board of Selectmen to help us, to help us get some traction with this, because it is very important, and we have to look into the future in order to be able to really appreciate how significant maintaining our trees are, is. And if you just look around, if you go to any town along the coast of Maine, you're not going to find, I mean, go to Booth Bay Harbor, you will not find the kind of shade trees, the kind of streets that we have here.
I think, I think you have our support.
Yeah, I know we do. And I don't mean to.
And we know how important it is.
Yeah, I don't mean to belabor the point, but we can make a very attractive, a very attractive project around the trees that would, would be just as important as a lot of other, as important as the ocean. And so I just thought I'd mention, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, number five, consider renewal liquor license application submitted by Allison's Dock Square, LTD DBA Allison's Restaurant, 11 Dock Square.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Number six, we need to consider an appointment to the Senior Advisory Committee, where they're down a member and they're requesting that we appoint Beverly Sewell to serve in that capacity. I see Beverly's here tonight. Did you want to approach the mic? You don't have to, Bev. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Congratulations, Beverly.
And that is to the term of June of 2020, I believe.
That's right. Did you not hear me say that?
I.
Okay. Consider appointments to the Village Master Plan Committee. This is not a vote this evening, just a discussion of setting up a committee to oversee the Village Master Plan, formerly the CDMK property. My suggestion is we do it the same way that we did with the Housing Trust. We have several applicants and.
Right now, we have 21 applicants.
Yes. And I think there's a few more coming in. And I'd suggest that we, over the course of one or two nights at the town hall, hold interviews with everybody. Okay. Any, yeah, all right. Well, those dates will be determined. Yeah, probably next month. Okay. Number eight, consider requests from Goose Rock Beach Advisory Committee regarding restricting motorized vehicles on the beach. Lori, you wish to speak for this?
We reviewed the regulation that was recommended by the Goose Rock Beach Advisory Committee at your last selectments meeting. Tonight, I hand it out to you, one with two amendments on it. People had brought up the concern about being able to make sure that the lobstermen could go pick up their traps. And secondly, Werner brought up that sometimes contractors need to get out on the beach to repair seawalls. So Amy Chow has drafted two changes, which are now item four and five, to address both of those. People would need permission to do either.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
Could I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I asked the question earlier as to why we, why we are changing this, what constituted the change. And I was told that once, a motorized bicycle, or I don't know, probably an ATV, one time was on the beach. I don't see a need, really, to make changes where our system has worked fine up until this point. And I know Richard Driver always says, you know, be proactive first. I didn't want to say that. But, you know, sometimes I think we jump onto things because of one incident. Anyway, I just feel that because there isn't really a problem, I don't know why we have to make changes.
Well, there wasn't a problem with Goose Rock Beach ownership, et cetera, et cetera, until there was a problem.
I'm just telling you my.
I mean, I agree with you. You know, it wasn't a big deal to me, but this is here in front of us, and I think this addresses, you know, some of their concerns. And maybe someday, somebody will, in the future, will look back and say, you know, those selectmen in 2019 weren't as dumb as we thought they were.
Or they're going to say, oh, another restriction.
Well, it's the will of the board.
Why don't we just look at it for one more year and see if we have any more problems? And then address it then, if we have any problems. I don't know.
Chief, do you have any comment on this?
The sound you hear is a bus approaching.
Always put me right here. Again, like you said, I think there were one, maybe two, and I don't believe that it was an ATV. I think it was somebody with some battery-operated electrical device. Again, I haven't had several complaints on this, so I'll leave it at that.
You have had some?
I have not.
Have not.
So why don't we just look at it into the future for another year and see if it gets, if we does get complaints, address it.
Stu?
You know, this is, I was inclined to vote affirmatively on this, simply because it was an action requested of us by the Goose Rock Beach Advisory Committee after they had put a lot of consideration into it. But I agree with Sheila in that I personally resist the notion of putting a lot of restriction and regulation in place when there isn't a problem or something that really speaks to the need. So I don't feel strongly that we should vote and move this today. I do think that we've done some good work in getting something that's actionable, should we decide to move on it. So if the boards decide, you know, I'll vote with the board if there's a desire to table this at the moment and reconsider it a later date.
I make a motion to table it.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. I believe Jim Stockman is up next. We're going to have a streetlight report presentation. And Mike Claus is going to also be part of this.
So Mike does have a couple of slides he wants to make sure people at home can see. So Mike is gonna, Mike Davis is going to put the projector back on and.
So back in 2003, I believe the town meeting voted to spend money on streetlights, and the streetlight committee and the town managed to spend everything but $5,000, was left on, left to be spent on that article. And Jen told me the auditors wanted that off the books, finish the job. So we talked to Jen, and we got the job finished. We got the report done and the money spent, and that's what we're here to talk about We got the original consultant to come back and look at it, and we got a report on what it would take to privatize our streetlights and what that would do for the town. It's a 23-page report with a 40-page appendix, which if anybody is really interested in that, they can, we can talk to them about it, but I'm trying to reduce that down to two slides out of the executive summary today. We have 277 streetlights in town, a bunch of different designs. I've shown four typical streetlights that you've got around town. Jim can talk about those. But I'm going to turn it over to him and let him talk about what the report says and what we'd like to get out of you guys tonight.
Thank you. I'm Jim Stockman. I'm chairman of the lighting committee. The report basically says that if the town was to take over all of the different public streetlights that we're currently leasing from CMP, we have a sizable savings right off the bat. We would have to then purchase them, and that would have to be negotiated in terms of. And Jen told me the auditors wanted that off the books, finish the job. So we talked to Jen, and we got the job finished. We got the report done, and the money spent, and that's what we're here to talk about We got the original consultant to come back and look at it, and we got a report on what it would take to privatize our streetlights and what that would do for the town. It's a 23-page report with a 40-page appendix, which, if anybody is really interested in that, they can, we can talk to them about it. But I'm trying to reduce that down to two slides out of the executive summary today. We have 277 streetlights in town, a bunch of different designs. I've shown four typical streetlights that you've got around town. Jim can talk about those. But I'm going to turn it over to him and let him talk about what the report says and what we'd like to get out of you guys tonight.
Thank you. I'm Jim Stockman. I'm chairman of the lighting committee. The report basically says that if the town was to take over all of the different public streetlights that we're currently leasing from CMP, we have a sizable savings right off the bat. We would have to then purchase them, and that would have to be negotiated in terms of, well, there's no fixture on that pole, but your inventory says there is CMP. And we don't want to buy that one. We want to do this. So that we need to come to terms with CMP, exactly what the inventory is, where it is. I might point out that we, as a town, have some of the oldest lighting in the country still existing. The slide over on your right-hand side are showing what is called a platter light. We discovered from CMP that the town has been renting those since 1927. And they are still on the books, and we are still paying for them monthly. So what we're proposing and what we hired the company to look at is the opportunity that was begun back in 2000 with Nathan Poor, really looking at, well, why can't we own the streetlights? What is it costing us? The technology from the original report has changed to now we're LED rather than compact fluorescent. And the bottom line is that the town, right there, underlined on the left-hand side, we could save $26,000 a year. What do we give up? We give up the lighting service up in the top table at $33,000. That's what we're paying for, an annual cost for CMP to maintain these fixtures. If we took over and we didn't make any changes to our infrastructure, to the lights, we would be looking at our maintenance cost of a little over $6,000. Our delivery service is the cost for CMP to do their wires, and the energy supply is a negotiated cost between the town and a power supplier. And so that number could change the next time we do a negotiation to buy power. So the contract savings is $26,000. It would cost us about $50,000 to buy the system, and we could then be looking at less than a two-year payback. And that's very impressive. That's without changing anything of the existing system. One of the things with the platter lights over on the right-hand side of the slide is that they are still 105-watt incandescent. And we have with CMP started to go around and just go to Home Depot and buy a screw-in LED bulb and discovered that we could save money there. And so we started to do that and also to get a longer life. The issue would be for us to maintain it, for the town to maintain it, we would have to have a CMP-certified electrician, is that the right word? Who would, who CMP approves to be working up on the lines where the big power is. We would then maintain them. We would relamp them. If somebody knocks one down, we'd have to replace it. Well, what happens if we have another ice storm and we lose a whole string of them? What's that going to cost us? We need to look at that, and Mike can address that. The other part of what we are looking at is for, to take this cost and introduce it for the next fiscal year, not for this fiscal year, because we, for this '20 budget. We have to go through, Mike and I have done an inventory of every one. We'd have to negotiate with CMP, and so it's going to take us a while to do that. Once we own the system, then there'll be a secondary event that will be developing a master plan for our lighting. Do are the lights in the right location? Should we change them to the light, the Jamestown radial wave happens to be a offering by a manufacturer that actually has an LED in it, and it has a cost to it? The other two fixtures on the left-hand side are more contemporary fixtures, and we could use fewer fixtures. But now we're into aesthetics, we're into the feeling of the town, we're into so many other issues. So it's a two-part deal. Let's buy the system, start our savings, and then we're going to have to get a group with the lighting committee or whoever to start looking at our master plan. Are the lights in the right location? Do I need them at an intersection or the crosswalk? The lighting committee did develop, about five years ago, a weighting system. So there's, somebody said, I'd like a light here in Goose Rock outside of my driveway. We would look at it, and we would say, well, what's the zoning? How many vehicles are there? What's the pedestrian load? All of this had a point value, so we could come up with some method to be able to say, no, that isn't worth the town funding, that private light for your driveway, versus, yes, this light outside of the library would be worthwhile because more people are getting a benefit from it.
You can do that. Take time.
Hey, Jim, I happen to like the 1927 light fixtures.
So do I.
I don't like to at least still pay for them, though.
No, I don't like that.
Because I think they've probably been paid for by now.
At least 100 times over.
So we can keep those old light fixtures from on. We're just looking at some additional savings and payback and just feel we got to bring those numbers to you. If you went to all LED fixtures, even with the radial wave, the same, the platter lights, you know, if we do eventually go to a new LED platter light, we think our total annual cost for maintenance of our whole light system goes down to around $5,800 a year. I mean, every, a lot goes away with new LEDs, because they use much less electricity, and because they use less electricity, the delivery service charge CMP would charge would go down, and our maintenance costs would go down because these are guaranteed lights, and they, there's virtually zero maintenance. So there are, there are some further cost savings down the road. I just wanted to put that, you know, we will be bringing that forward.
Mike, what about the replacement of poles? I mean, that takes pretty specialized equipment.
So all our, all our streetlights are all on existing CMP utility poles?
Correct.
And we would, we would just be reattaching to the existing poles with new arms. We wouldn't be putting any new poles up. We would, we would just be doing attachments off of CMP, which just means we're buying an arm.
But I, there, I mean, I've seen where they, CMP has had to replace poles because they've gone bad or...
That is at CMP's cost. Those are CMP-owned poles.
Even if we buy the lights?
We're just buying the lights. We're not buying the poles.
We're not buying the pole. We're, we have the right to put streetlights on their poles.
Oh, okay. I didn't get that. All right.
Will we have to pay rent on the poles every month?
I don't believe...
We are paying, effectively, we are paying some kind of contributing factor. If we went back to the previous slide, please. That delivery service charge over on the second column in from the left, that delivery service charge is, it probably, it includes the arm, it includes probably some cost of that pole. But the legislature passed this law back in 2003, '04, that finally enabled municipalities to be able to own the fixtures even though they were on CMP poles. And that was a critical piece of legislation. It was done as an energy conservation bill. But that's the critical part of, that we do not have to absorb the cost of that pole. We only own the light, the arm, and the wire between the fixture to wherever it hooks up to CMP services.
I think this is a wonderful idea, and I encourage you to explore it further.
Okay. All right. We just wanted to let you know that, you know, these costs are coming up.
This was a great idea. Paying for anything in less than two and a half years that we're paying for now.
Yeah. Hi, Dave James. I think most people would agree that it makes sense for the town to purchase the lighting fixtures and stuff, because, I forget the number, 26,000, 1,000, we might say. But I think you've all seen Susan Graham's letter, which just points out the fact that we have different areas of town, and that Dock Square and our historical districts in Village Area and out in Cape Orpuss, you might want to consider keeping the older radial disc-type lights.
I agree with you, David, but that's a discussion down the road. That's not a discussion for tonight.
I know, and that's why, I like what Jim's proposing. You make it a two-step process. One, you decide, are you going to do this and save 26,000? And then, two, you set up a committee with the lighting committee to look at which lights you might want to convert to Cobra lights versus the radial disc lights. So I certainly support that.
All right. Thank you, David. All right.
Nina.
Just make a comment. I spoke to a resident on Locke Street about this a day or two ago, and she mentioned that they really prefer the old-style lights, too. I'm just wondering if any of these light fixtures come with solar panels so that you could run the whole LED system without giving CMP anything or making it even more miniscule that you have to pay them.
I think that's a wonderful idea, but I think that these are all things that we're going to look at as we go ahead. I mean, we're not authorizing anything tonight. We're just given our blessing to move ahead with this.
Just a suggestion that you look at that.
Yeah, absolutely. And maybe you should talk to Jim about that, because he obviously knows a lot more about this light, these lights than I do. Thank you, Nina. Oh, Sheila, I'm sorry.
Jim, are there any towns, or do you have examples of towns that have purchased their lights and what they've gone through?
Falmouth, Yarmouth, South Portland are the three that come to mind. There's a few more on that consortium that got together to do purchasing, a common purchasing of fixtures. But they were the traditional, what we call a Cobra head, not our radial platter lights that we have in our town. So, yes, there is, but it really doesn't apply to us. We're on our own because we want to try to preserve those original fixtures as much as possible.
And do you know if they, if the plan was successful for them? For instance, hidden costs that they didn't realize?
Not off the top of my head, but I could certainly make, Mike and I can call Nathan and see, because he was one of the real leaders in getting this thing through and implementing it, which was the important part of it.
Okay.
So, just to clarify here, when we buy them, we buy whatever's on the pole, Cobras, pie plates, whatever you call them, et cetera, et cetera. And then it's up to us to leave them, deal with them, change them, what have you, in the future.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All of that's in the future, and all of that has a different set of input in terms of the aesthetics, the performance.
Sounds like we'll have plenty of, we'll save plenty of money to have some money to replace them as we see fit.
Yes.
So, thank you, Jim.
Hi. I'm Susan Boak, and I have a question.
Yes.
When you go to the new LED lights, will you have additional lumens for visibility and safety?
That will all be part of the design process. Before we implement it, there's a lot of technical details that go into that in terms of distribution from the fixture, and is the aesthetic more important, or is the performance? All of these things are variables. All of these things truly need to be looked at very carefully in terms of our future, but are just our basic change. It would stay the way it is.
Yes. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Well, that was very interesting. Number 10. Consider changes to proposed ordinance revisions by town attorney. Lori, would you like to speak to this?
Tracy O'Rourke, town clerk, is coming up. These are the ordinances we've been talking about. She's just going to update you on Amy's feedback.
So Amy just had some very small changes on the waterfront ordinance, where we're talking about waiting list members. The only thing she did was add residency status into that section that's being added. So it reads, waiting list members must renew their waiting list application annually to retain, retain placement on the waiting list. All information, such as vessel type and length, residency status, as well as contact information, must be updated by the person on the list. So it was just a very minor change to what we had brought forward. And then on the street ordinance, the only thing that she added was, on page two, Article Three, Number Four, she just wanted us to name the specific staff person who will be in charge of that. It was kind of left up in the air. So we put in the addressing officer, which is Jimmy Burrows at the present time, so that there's somebody responsible for that. And other than that, those are the only two changes she had to what we proposed. So that's where we're going with it.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on. Number 11. Adopt resolution to authorize town of Kennebunkport to issue up to $1 million in bonds for the Ocean Avenue Seawall Project.
This is already been authorized at the town meeting last year, and we're about to undertake construction this September. This authorization will allow us to go out to the bond market to sell the bond so that we can pay for construction.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Number 12. Consider a construction over-limit permit.
DOT has requested that we have an over-limit permit for the work that they're going to be doing on Mills Road in case any overweight vehicles need to access our town roads to get the pavement down there.
That's just a typical thing they do for their construction projects. They don't want me blocking them, blocking their trucks.
This is MDOT, right?
This is MDOT.
Yeah, okay.
Tell them to come in from the Bitterford side.
All right. So moved.
Do I have a second, Sheila?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Appointment of town officers. Lori, would you like to read that?
This is the annual appointment of town officers. So in Item 13, you have a list from, our animal control officer is currently vacant, but we hope to be bringing you position soon. And everyone else is listed there, from assessor's agent to tree warden.
Okay. There's a list up here if anybody'd like to look at it. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations. You're all reappointed. Number 14. Award bid for wastewater boiler replacement. Thank you, Chris.
So as you know, the waste oil boiler that we have at the plant is on its way out. It's starting to fail. I had contacted several heating contractors and had them come down and look at what we were dealing with, and they unanimously agreed that the most financially sound way to replace it was with propane and simply replace the boiler itself and use the existing pipe, piping that's already there. So we solicited several bids. Atlantic Comfort came in as a low bidder at $22,583, and we are looking for authorization or whether the contractor then for the replacement of the boiler.
Good motion?
Yeah. Award the bid to Atlantic Comfort at the amount of $22,583.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Chris. Oh, yeah, well, here we go. Award bid for valve replacement at Cape Orpuss Pump Station.
Yes. So this is part of the current bond projects that we have taking place right now. This includes the Influent and Effluent pumps, valves, check valves at the Headworks Room at the plant, as well as Cape Orpuss Pump Station. We, this went out to bid... We, this went out to bid, we only had two responsive bidders, one being Atlantic Mechanical, the other being T-Buck Construction. The little bidder on this was Atlantic Mechanical at $160,500. So we are looking for authorization to award the contract to that company.
Quite a difference in the price, huh?
It is.
Yes.
For the same thing?
It is, yep.
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Atlantic Mechanical, Inc., at $160,500.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Number 16, other business.
I have none, thank you.
Sheila?
I'll say it.
Lori?
I do. So I have a request from the Parsons Way Committee. They have been asked whether or not we might erect a Blue Star Memorial marker along Parsons The marker is in memory of veterans who served during war times, and this request is coming from the garden club, and they would like to put the marker along Parsons Way because it's a very visible location. So one thing that we did discuss with the Parsons Way Committee is whether there were any deed restrictions on that. The deeds do say, the only thing that this Blue Star marker might come in under is, it says, we can't have ornaments there. I don't know whether we would define this as an ornament or not, but in our discussions, we thought that if we kept it within the town right of way and off the actual Parsons Way land, then we should be fine. Parsons Way Committee is recommending that we do have this memorial erected.
Do we need a vote?
Well, I said that really because we're going to erect something with, you know, within town land, that we should go back to you.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Great idea, great idea.
I think that's a terrific idea.
That's very nice.
All those in favor? Great. Anything else, Lori?
Nope.
All I'd like to just say is thank you for everybody coming, coming out this evening. It's been a long evening, and with that, I'd say we get ready to wrap it up. Somebody want to move the warrants?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Allen?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Sheila. All in favor? We're done. Thank you. We got two hours.